So as you heard, the meeting's being recorded, so we'll make sure it's posted on the town website and YouTube page. Um, this is our second budget work session. Uh, we've also tentatively saved um some time ahead of next Monday's council meeting if we wanted to do a final one. Um, but uh, this is a joint meeting between the council and the uh, the budget committee. I uh, so we have John Medalia and Peter Tynan from the budget committee joining us. Uh, Anne Bolton, who's the chair of the committee, is not available to join us tonight. Um, but she did provide her her notes for you in the last session. Um, and as I said, uh, next Monday, if we if we need to, we can have another meeting. Um, so uh, just at the folks that aren't actively participating in the discussion, um, if you don't mind pausing your video, uh, helps us keep the recording nice and clean for folks that watch later. There is a closed captioning option for those that want to follow along that way. Um, and just because you're not actively engaged in the discussion tonight doesn't mean that you won't have an opportunity to um be further involved with the budget. Feel free to send me a chat if you if you want uh through Zoom tonight and then uh, of course, the budget is scheduled to be introduced at the April meeting and adopted at the May meeting um, with a public comment uh opportunity as well. So um, plenty of o- opportunities for uh public comments on there. Um, if we do get interrupted tonight in a way that uh doesn't let us continue on with the conversation, um, I'll just uh pause the pause the recording, pause the meeting, end it, and I'll send out a new link for people to rejoin so we can um continue on. Um, but with that, uh, I will turn it.
Well, actually, I'm turning it back to you.
Okay, turn it over to me. Okay. Um, so last meeting, we had discussed um town revenues and had gone over that, I think, in pretty good detail. Um, I don't know if there are any questions that you wanted to loop back on revenue?
I did have one question, and that is you have this fee schedule. Do you have uh any uh uh idea of how much additional revenue the revised fee schedule would generate for FY twenty five?
Yeah, great question. Thanks, John. So I did send around a proposed fee schedule as well with the budget tonight um for discussion. Um, what we've done for now is just kept the fee estimates and budget for next year even. Um, in part be- because it's it's hard to guess if i- i- it will at all impact the fees that we do receive. Um, and fees, to be honest, are such a small part of our overall revenue that um a- anything we get beyond what we budgeted is kind of gravy at that point, but after, but hopefully the idea being we we can see year over year and evaluate it so that we're getting a better um a better approximation of what our goals are for um what we want to receive versus the cost of administering the fees.
All right, thanks.
And uh, uh, council member, I see you have your hand up too.
Yeah, uh, Matt, I was going to ask, request you clarify. So since the last meeting, you have updated the file.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So.
It might be useful to just run through what you updated.
Sure, just a few mostly minor updates. Um, one, uh, I uh council member Barr had noted that um I had included in the capital projects, but it hadn't been on the actual budget. The uh renovations to the pool bridge. So that's now included in the FY twenty five budget. And uh, that was really the 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 main addition to the budget. Um, then kind of bigger picture. Even with that addition, our unencumbered reserves are still high enough that I updated it so that our rainy day fund, which um, we have a a resolution with a goal of keeping twelve months operating budget in a rainy day fund. And in the last iteration of the budget, we had about eleven and a half months. And so just bump that up so that we could meet the twelve month goal in the next fiscal year.
When we meet the twelve month goal, let Phil Young know because he was the founder for any day budget and it's always anxious.
That's a fair, fair point. Yes, uh, yeah, uh, shout out, uh, as council member Barr said, to to uh former chair Phil Young, who was kind of the the um, the one leading the charge on on the rainy day funds. Go ahead.
Uh, follow up on that, Matt. Thanks for that. So then the fees that you sent, the fee schedule, which included two parts, the permit fees and the recreation fees. Uh, you have not in, um, those updated, proposed updated figures are not in the proposed budget right now, correct?
Correct. I I didn't, I didn't make any changes to the budget itself um to reflect those. I I I could just buy a percentage if you think that that would better capture it. Um, but as I said, I I I, it's hard to know if there's any impact on I suspect that that's not going to be the driving force between if somebody decides to put a dumpster in their yard or not that um, if you need a dumpster, you need a dumpster. Um, but um, at the moment, the budget doesn't there's no change to um our anticipated revenues from fees.
Thank you.
Um, so last month, um, or excuse me, last week, we went over revenue and um I thought uh, we we started to go over operating um, operating expenditures a little bit and started talking about some of some of the um things there. Um, I, uh, one of the big things, just as a reminder, was that the trash recycling, we have a of anticipated pretty hefty increase there. Um, that that's kind of the main change to the budget. We talked about different options for our debt servicing. Um, ultimately, explain the rationale that it fiscally didn't make a whole lot of sense to try to pay that down early. Um, and I think council member Roback, you had asked about some of the public safety committees um requests, and so we had discussed how those proposals are uh, are included in the in the budget. Um, so if you, I'll share my screen. So as a reference point, I I didn't print this off for you, but it is included in the budget file for your reference. Um, we have a list of the committee requests that came in for this year from the various committees. Then I had set aside some of some requests and recommendations of my own. And then um, it's listed as num- uh, tab twelve. We have combined um combined proposals um from committees and and the staff. So um, looking at those, a lot of these are are capital, as as you'll, as you'll note, the big one being um sidewalk installations. So if you look at the big, the five-year plan, not no, main page here, on your capital expenses, um, you see six, eight, one hundred streets. So that's encompassing streets, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. We have about three quarters of a million dollars budgeted for next year. So that's including the um budget for the new sidewalk installation on Cumberland as well as implementing master planning, uh redoing streets. Um.
From the um consultation.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So um, so that's, that's what that number is. And then on the screen here I have pulled up, you'll see that the um, the sidewalk installations on Cumberland Avenue, so um are included there, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for them.
And I know we were talking about last time, um, that you know, we have some of these ARPA funds that have to be allocated out or planned out by the end of this year, right?
Yes.
And so do we know like within this, like what that would go to or?
Yes, and actually I've broken that down as well. Um, so on the screen here, um, we actually have an, we have more projects that are eligible in the different categories that we've sort of highlighted as wanting to go towards ARPA than what we got as part of that grant. So we were granted uh one point two five million dollars, and we have over one point six million dollars in um, in total.
But the one point two five doesn't include the streetlights that have already happened?
The one point two five is, that's, that's just the the money that we got.
Oh, so we haven't, have we charged anything?
Yeah, so so far, we we've, we've done um over five hundred thousand dollars towards it. So.
Okay, so we have like seven whatever left.
Yeah, so we have about seven hundred thousand dollars left. So that will include some projects that we can do this year in addition to the capital projects that we have for next year.
Okay, okay, but we have to like obviously like really be on that.
And you're still, you're still comfortable with, we'll have everything obligated by seven twenty first this year.
Yeah, so the, so the the, i- it needs to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty six. So as long as we have a contract in place by this year, then we still can, we have two additional years to spend the actual money. Um, so I I think by getting a contract in place for the master planning, that'll more than capture all of this money. Um, and if we if we're feeling the crunch, then um, we do have, also, we can we can sort of uh work the numbers so that we're spending some money on, for instance, attorney fees that are related to it to go towards it so that we make sure we're hitting that cutoff and not losing the money and that those funds can kind of be treated from a fungible way.
Okay.
Uh, council member, I see you have your your hand up.
Yeah, just uh on on building on Shannon's question, I'm wondering for our, the thirty minutes we've allotted for next week before the council session, if if we can get the a- accurate figures on what's actually left. And then the cor- the corresponding anticipated contract that's on your radar. So we just have that, have that all in front of us, so we know exactly what it is. And um, you know, that was a question I had coming into this session. I know we have it, but it might be good to just get to that precision.
I will, um, I'll work with EJ and get us logged into the ARPA account and then um I think I can either just print off the report that we have so far and combine it with, you know, what we anticipate or um, or just put it into an Excel Excel spreadsheet for us.
And you know, I wanted to uh also say that I think between the last session and this session, there were two pieces, two big pieces. If everyone will remember, one was folks had to send in their inputs, which I believe the number of council members have, and I think you've updated the file accordingly, if I'm not mistaken. And the other was the fees. So you you let us know, Matt, if you would like us to discuss the fees today or what's the proposal on your end on that front?
Yeah, um, I I'm happy to discuss fees if you want to go over fees specifically. Um, I I put together a document as a starting point. I can share that w- with you if you want to start discussing that. We have not. So um, just taking one step back as a refresher, we hadn't updated fees, I think.
Right, but I think the councillor Barr suggested that at the same time that um wasn't it your idea that when the budget's introduced at the same time, a new fee schedule could be introduced? And didn't you say it should be voted on in at the May meeting?
Yeah, that that was the thought, yes. Oh, um, I do have one ish law bring up, which is on the tree fees. And you distinguish between ornamental and and canopy trees, um, twenty five and fifty. What about size of a tree? I mean, it's a very big difference between proposing to cut down tree with a forty and trunk and a tree with a ten inch trunk, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so do you want to scale the fee by the size of the trunk when it comes to canopy trees is really where I'm going.
Yeah, so um, council member Barr is referencing one of the recommendations that I have in there. So I had um, it's a little bit hard to share so that it's totally uh easy to read for you, but um I recommended adding a fee for tree removal. Um, so specifically, my thought was tree removal for as part of construction. So as opposed to if you have a dead or dying tree and need a tree removed, I I don't think we necessarily want to impose a fee there. But if a tree is being proposed for removal as part of construction, that that should be factored into our fee schedule since it's factored into the actual this um the actual permitting discussion as well. So I had originally basically just took what um the town of Chevy Chase, I believe, uh Chevy Chase Village um has a a fifty dollar per tree fee. So it is, it is pretty minimal. Um, just a jumping off point, but yet to to council member Barr's point, you know, there there may be um I, you 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 may want to distinguish it in in ways other than just a canopy tree versus an ornamental tree, but size for for instance might be.
So we chart, we were talking about charging a fee to take down a tree, not if it's sickened in your backyard, but if you're doing construction on your house.
Exactly, yeah.
And that Chevy Chase does that too?
Yes, yeah, Chevy Chase Village does. They're the only one that that does it currently.
Is this because we need to send Tolbert out to see it and to make a recommendation?
Yeah, that's that's sort of the thought process behind it is that's what, two things. Number one is, yes, Tolbert puts together a tree removal and replanting plan.
Okay.
Based on um, you know, the existing trees on the property and a tree uh preservation plan, which the Chevy Chase Village actually requires, they ha- they do a two hundred fifty dollar per tree preservation. I didn't suggest anything for it at this point, in part thinking we want to incentivize protecting the trees rather than removing them. Um, but yeah, the idea, to go back to your original question, would be hypothetically, a new house is built and they have to remove five different trees that you would pay a fee per tree that needs to be removed for that construction.
But for Tree City, I mean, fifty dollars is like nothing, you know?
What do we pay Tolbert an hour?
Uh, it can't be related to that.
Why not? Why can't that be part of our?
Remember Ron discussed that before.
No, I don't, but okay. I would just think that we have administrative costs.
Remember, remember Ron, remember Ron said last time that we caught the fees can't be related to how much it, how much it costs.
Yeah, we we don't want to, we don't want to set the fees so that we are making money off of it um, or or even penalizing.
He's, he's right, he's in here, is he, is he?
No, he's not. He hasn't.
No, I I I wouldn't suggest that we make money off of our residents when they need to do work in in their house. But if we have to send in one of our consultants.
Okay, then you should hold that question to when, after it's introduced and and there's a hearing on it, you can ask.
Okay.
When it's introduced, you can ask Ron.
Okay.
And I think, I think he answered at the last meeting. I don't remember the specific legal answer.
Well, one, one, one thing to your point that we have discussed as a staff before, but I did not in- include in this recommendation right now, um, was certain projects, we might meet with somebody multiple times and it, you know, that ends up costing the town a a lot of money. So um, if we did want to do some pre-construction consulting fee, you know, that that you, maybe you get uh, it's not a fully fleshed out idea, so I'm not sure about that.
That's a really good idea because I think you brought it up or somebody's brought it up before that we that we convene a pre-construction meeting.
Well, we require a pre-construction meeting now. So I think the idea would be you know, you get, you get one, we'll go over the the project with you, but if you keep coming back and and wanting to meet with Doug or Tolbert or whoever it might be, you know, two, three, four, or five times um, that there's some expectation.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should ask Ron about that and and uh, and this is why, you know, Ron also I think we really, what what way then would really streamline our processes if we recommended to applicants that have variances that they, it's in their best interest to get an attorney. He doesn't, he doesn't agree with that.
No, I don't agree with that.
But, but if you notice in the history of our uh variances, when there's an attorney here, often there's less conflict and it goes faster.
I I would hate to put that onto a resident thinking they have to come in with an attorney.
If they're getting, well, when you go to the planning board
That's different.
And the citizens are represented by an attorney. Since we have an attorney here, just think of all, this is for the future, but just think of all these hearings when people come here that have no ability to um, to present an application. And it's really not fair to them. And and offline, I will give you examples. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, that might be, so tha- that might be something to consider. And then going back to council member Barr's question is if we want, you know, do is is fifty dollars not enough? Do we want to get input from Ron to figure out?
Yeah.
Or do we want to tie it to the size of the trees or the overall circumference on the property that's being removed, some, some, something along those lines?
Yeah, I would probably not tie it to the size. I I would just call the tree a tree. You know, because then it goes into, oh, well, it's not really a tree, it's a bush or, you know, all that. Um, so I think it would be easier just to have it all be one fee, is my opinion.
Right.
Instead of per tree, just a a flat fee.
Oh, no, I mean, per tree, like, you know, the trees are you know, arguably, I mean, as part of the deal, they still will have to be replacing trees that match the trees. So um, but for a fee to take down a tree, I don't know that it would matter if it's a, you know, cherry tree that is losing its blossoms or a, you know, canopy tree. I don't know. What what do you guys think? What do you think, Robin?
But I mean, I I'm thinking about how long it takes to replace the tree. Um, and obviously, a large trunk means it's an older tree, and so it takes longer to replace it.
Yeah.
And that was why I was thinking maybe it should have higher fees because of that.
Well, I think the fee should be higher than fifty. Yeah, I mean, I think the tree should, I think the tree fee should be high.
Well, I mean, we can have a greater, do you think it should be the same fee for an ornamental tree and a canopy tree or usually be different instead?
I don't, I I just don't know if we want to get into like what's, what makes what tree a tree or, you know what I mean? But I think that they're, you know, when they're, when they come through and they say we're taking thirteen trees down in this, in the backyard. You know, I think those thirteen trees should have a fee because they don't have one right now.
Correct.
So anything is better than what it's been. Um, you know, but then I don't know if we really want to get into the weeds of like, oh, but this one's not really a tree, it's a shrub. Or, you know, but when, however they're listed as trees on Montgomery County.
You can R C and wait for recommendation. Then do that.
Sure. I see, uh, John, Johnny, Kabir both have their hands up.
Go ahead, John.
Um, I'm a little concerned about a- all these fees in particular, this one about the tree removal. I mean, you you see that uh four of the uh, the neighboring communities don't, apparently don't have any fee. And I'm just concerned that, you know, a potential new resident comes in and he sees a fee for this and a fee for that and a fee for something else. I mean, one way to handle it is to say that, you know, the I don't know, e- either fold it into a a more general, larger fee, you know, for building a new ho- home, for example, or perhaps say anything over, you know, three or five trees, you know, has a charge. But you know, I'm concerned about the, the visual, you know, the the optics to a potential new resident of seeing all these fees, you know, for everything. So, over. Kabir?
Thanks, John. Um, I was thinking, Matt, so there are two sets of fees here, the highest level. You have fees that you've had for a while where you're proposing an update.
Yes.
To the fees. And then there are new fees that you're you're proposing, like this one, that we've not had. On the fees that we've had for a while where you're proposing an update, I was just trying to put my mind around what's the right sort of reason for it, what's the best benchmark or consistent benchmark?
Yeah.
And, you know, the one thought is to anchor it in inflation. And so I think you would mention either it's twenty seventeen or twenty eight, nineteen, when we last increased fees. So you kind of say, what is that in today's dollars and what would we be paying today? If you did that across the board, almost invariably, of course, everything will go up. But then that's the rationale for for the increase. Was is, in every case, the rationale is slightly different right now, or, you know, sometimes it's sort of recovering costs, sometimes you're benchmarking to an evening down, sometimes um, you know, uh, i- i- it's it's not benchmarked. So that's one thought I have for you and for the rest of the council to consider. If we do increase, especially the permit fees. Because by the way, overall, as Matt mentioned, the bottom line impact of these fees is negligible. That's what I think John is also alluding to. Uh, so it's very, very negligible, especially the recreation fees. So on the permit side, I think, I think that's what Shannon might be alluding, that we may use fees as a deterrent. You know, we, so that fewer trees are cut, for instance. So there must, there's some value in that beyond um, beyond just the bottom line impact of it, which I can, which I appreciate. Uh, and so, but the permit fees in, in particular, we may want to anchor it in the, in the rate of inflation increase, I'm I'm wondering. Uh, so that's just on the existing fees. On the new fees, it would be good to maybe summarize all the new ones you're proposing. I don't know how many new ones you've proposed and just walk us through the rationale for it.
Sure.
And just on the tree one, I tend to agree with Shannon, there's a certain elegance to us to a one fee for all trees, if we are to move forward with that. Uh, because the, uh, then it's a sort of slippery slope, you know, as, as you, like, you can imagine that gets teared over time. If there was Ron in this room, he might recommend that. You know, there's a certain elegance to a, to a single, if we decide to move forward with that, which I don't have a clear view on just yet.
Yeah, and I guess I would want the town attorney to weigh in. Um, I hadn't really thought of it from that perspective specifically to um how much are, how much can we use fees as a deterrent um, if we have, if we're, if we are legally able to use that, that.
That's a good point.
Um, uh, but yeah, um, i- i- yeah, if if you'd like, really, the only new ones are the tree, the tree fee. And then um also on driveways, currently our fee schedule doesn't we had, we previously didn't actually regulate driveways. We had only uh required a permit for a curb cut or new driveway apron. So I just folded the cost of a driveway into the, that curb cut uh driveway.
And there's this stormwater review fee as well.
Yes, right, exactly. So if it's a new, if it's a new driveway, then it also goes through the stormwater review.
Yeah, I mean, I I I understand the point about not wanting to overfee. You know, I just want, you know, us to, you know, maybe, maybe it's something that we kind of take down the line in terms of, you know, what the permits are for us versus everyone else. But, you know, I mean, we're in like an amazing location, you know, with walkability to the metro and, I mean, across the street from us on Wisconsin, like, you can't tear a house down in Chevy Chase Village. So, you know, I feel like we're, you know, Martin's Edition is way over there, like, we're, I mean, this is where people want to live and, you know, we want to try to preserve like the character of our homes too in the neighborhood. So I don't think that, you know, I I don't think it can be too much.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that, I think certainly the thinking behind a tree fee is we go through a rigorous review process, including hiring an arborist.
Like, that's what we are known as.
So we want to have an associated fee with that. Um, what I don't know is just from a legal standpoint, can we use it as a justification that, well, we put a really high number for fee for trees at the hypothetical? Just from a legal standpoint, can we use it as a justification that, well, we put a really high number for fee for trees at the hypothetical? Because we don't want people to take down trees, or or are we limited legally to say. We're putting in a tree to help. Uh, offset some of the administrative costs of it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's what makes sense. It makes sense that we we have to cover our costs to a certain degree, and um.
Well, well, we, I think that the deterrent is more important than covering the cost. Because to Shannon's point, you know, remember who we're dealing with, we're dealing with people. That are paying four million dollars off cash for homes. So there, so for them, a fi- a fine of a hundred dollars is like. So I'll just pay the fine, and then you lose this, so so, so we've had this debate. In among the elected officials in the past about that, so it's an important one to keep in mind.
Well, and it's the, you know, the in the developers that are making a million and a half dollars on every new house that comes down in this neighborhood.
My only, my only caution, though, is just before we go too far down that road, is Ron, Ron's response. And again, just that I I haven't talked to him about it specifically. But I could envision him saying, no, the way you deter it is by changing your your code. The fees are only meant to off, to offset.
He keeps saying that, but I also wanna just throw in here. Yes, people come in here and pay four million dollars for a house, but that's not everybody. So it's unfair to take, to apply this as if everybody is rich.
But also remember that when you propose the fees, then you then you get reaction from the public. So if you propose, let's say you eventually propose a really high fee. And if nobody protests it, then it's not gonna be a fee, that's the beauty of the process.
Well, and 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 the thinking behind it being a per tree fee was. You know, there's a, there is a difference between. Uh, a resident putting in a a deck on their backyard, that's, that means they need to take out one tree that they can replant versus. A new construction where there's twelve trees that are being removed, and, you know, has a. And 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 is all now new, two and a half inch caliber trees that are replacing them, that takes years to.
Well, a major fee is one fee for. Somebody putting up, you know, doing some construction on their home versus a new build.
Well, so that that goes, so then that kind of cycles back to, I think, what Council Kumar was asking about is existing fees and how, so. I, this proposal, one of the ones that's not tied to inflationary increases is. The proposed con- uh, new construction cost. Where I have benchmarked it to match Chevy Chase Village, which is the highest fee. Um, so, uh, to be honest, we probably have more administrative costs for new construction in town because.
They don't do it.
We we do have, we do have a a reverse review process, we include stormwater, we include. Trees, and then we require our staff to come to like hearing as well, which costs time and, um, so. That that's, there's, there's a fee for new construction that encompasses, you know, everything that goes with that. As opposed to a a a, a more specific fee for construction that's based on the size of. Any addition you're you're adding.
I was just wanted to quickly add, Matt, and for the council's benefit. Is that if it was an inflationary anchored increase, it would be three thousand five hundred or something like that, if I'm not mistaken. Correct? Versus five thousand.
Yes, yeah. So right now, right now, uh, at the top, we do. Twenty-five hundred or the the greater of, or half of the Montgomery County. Fee, whichever is greater, usually twenty-five thou- or twenty-five hundred dollars is greater, so. Right now, in comparison to our neighbors, we're low. But if if we increased it by inflation, we'd be kind of right, right where we were five years ago, which is kind of in the middle of. Of the neighboring towns. Versus proposed, I have us matching what is the highest of of all the towns around us. John, I s- I saw your hands up as well.
Yeah, okay, so I uh, I had a a comment trying to so- sort of summarize what we've been talking about on the trees. And that is, it seems like there are two pieces, one is the deterrent effect, the other is the administrative cost. The administrative cost is not gonna be much different, I think, if we're talking about taking down five trees or eight trees. Uh, and then as far as the deterrent, it's almost, you know, as Jeffrey was, as the mayor was saying, it's almost like. No amount of money is going to deter someone s- uh, from taking down a tree if they are building a. Multi-million dollar house, and they've already paid a million dollars plus to tear down an existing house. So the deterrent i- i- is really not a deterrent, but a prohibition, you know, the council. Uh, could just go over the plan and, you you know, or at an early stage and say. You know, you cannot take down all these trees, and you're gonna have to adjust the plan. So that you'd have a fixed cost for the review, and then there's the town council. Uh, giving a yea or nay in in place of a deterrent, over.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I think in terms of, just taking a step back, in terms of new fees, it sounds like. The driveway is pretty. Non-controversial, that we're just adding back to that list of curb cuts, driveways, and then as necessary, there's a stormwater. Um, fee to it. Um, that's going up from seventy-five to one hundred, so that's. Pretty much in line with inflation, a little bit above, but. Keeps us in line with our neighboring municipalities. And then for new fee, the other new fees are the trees and and the stormwater review as well. So, um, trees, we've touched on, the stormwater review is. Oh, there we go, stormwater review. Um. I've tiered that based on. Sort of what the, what the review is for it, so under four hundred square feet. Um, of of fee of a hundred fifty dollars, the thinking being there, those are pretty minor. Projects that we don't, we don't want to blow the cost out of the water if you're. Putting in a a new driveway or just a patio in your rear yard. That four hundred square feet is. Not entirely random, the thinking there is four hundred square feet is where the county requires a drainage plan. So the idea being, if it's small enough that the county doesn't even require it, we don't wanna have a a really exorbitant fee. Then we have anything over two hundred, uh, over four hundred, the fee cost goes up, and then for new construction. Because that usually requires some back and forth, um, the cost goes up again. Um. And then, then, then we go back to the the tree.
Yes, having those people all maybe, points made, maybe. If all we're doing is covering some portion of the administrative costs, then it should be a single fee for trees regardless of their type. Can't be all ornamental.
Okay.
Um, and we'd better make sure our code is good enough, so that we can protect those fourteen trees as well.
So does, I mean, fifty would be. Matching what a neighboring community has, um, so that's at least a a starting point for us, is that. I I've I've heard some feedback that maybe fifty's not enough, um.
Is per, per tree or?
Per tree, yeah. So if you're talking, you know, if a new construction takes out twelve trees, it's six hundred dollars, if it's.
But it, but it's how much time of. Over does it take to review twelve trees versus one tree?
Right, yeah, that's, that's sort of the idea, in part because there. Usually, if there's several trees, it's gonna require council, council review as well, so there's council, right?
Okay.
Well, it's fifty not enough, we need to go up to seventy-five.
I guess ultimately, that's your, that's your call, ma- maybe we still have a missing piece and could get Ron's advice on. Um, what are the different elements of of the code that we. Are the different elements that we need to incorporate into what the encapsulates.
But you, tonight, you really should decide you, what you wanna put in the, in the, cuz it's gonna be introduced someone.
That that that's a fifty per tree, and that's a good starting point.
But then you'll see what would the reaction is, and then also, if you decide you wanna amend it in May, then you can do that.
Okay.
And also, remember, another thing is that, let's say, let's say you vote on these new fees. And then you decide in June that they're too low or too high, you can change it.
Okay.
So it's not like the budget, where you're voting on the budget. This for the year, and then you have.
I understand.
You you get it, what I'm saying, yeah.
Also, I'll speak to Kabir's point about. Right in translation, I mean, the idea behind having reviews fees every year is exactly that, that we. Check them to see if they're still appropriate given inflation that's been happening.
Yeah. So the the majority of them, that, I'm sorry, I I I didn't see your hand up there, council member.
Just quickly on on Mayor Slaven's point, I think, if if you're gonna introduce, since we are intending to introduce it, Matt, it would be useful. For the council to know John's original question, and the answer to John's original question, what could be the revenue impact? My recommendation is be anchored in this current fiscal year's. Um, permitting history, and just say if we had the same year. And we had, had these fees in place, how much we would have, uh, accrued in fee revenue. As a, as a benchmark for us, so we have that as a council going into the final word.
Okay, great. So then, for the others, the majority of them are, um. Going up based on inflation slash, a kind of a combination of inflation and, um. And benchmarking better against our our neighbors, so just going down the line. Um, and if there's any that you wanted to stop and talk about, maybe I can, that that may be used as way. Demolition, um. Basically, keeping it the same, then we're we're actually, we benchmark it against our neighbors, we're in a pretty good place. Um, I just added a new tier to it, where if it's under that one hundred fifty square feet, so there's no s- no stormwater. That there's a lower fee because we don't, we don't need to do that, it's usually administratively not very burdensome. Um, the late fee, I bumped up to two fifty, that's pretty much inflation, um. The truth is, we don't really, we don't really typically do many of those late.
What's a late fee?
Our code does allow a provision if somebody has an extra week where they can submit and request that they be added on to the agenda.
Shouldn't we just get rid of that?
We could, by by code.
Okay, let let me give the history of that, so. There used to be, and probably concern of our members, you know, there used to be a way that you could, um. Uh, pay a fee and then request that the council hold a hearing. At at a certain time, but. U- usually in the past, we were never able to schedule, would you remember? So when we did the code review, I think that that was. A place where we put it in and to be discussed in the future, but since you all have been on the council, I don't think we've ever had it recorded.
No, I mean, I usually just, to, I I I think the the argument for keeping it in there is just in case there's some. Some sort of emergency kind of repairs, or, you know, just something that we can't foresee that they say. I I really need to get on the, it's not gonna be a new construction that they say, hey, come on, let me on the agenda, but. If some addition needs to happen for some reason, and they missed it by a day or, you know.
But it's still, there's no, I mean, it it, there's no requirement that if they pay the fee. That we are required to schedule the hearing.
Correct, we 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 don't.
So it's it, it it's it.
So I I think until, until we do remove it, it makes sense to keep a fee in there, but it's maybe worth the discussion.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's fine, but I mean, I think it's a good move, because we're try- trying to give everyone, you know, equal access to. Understanding, you know, what neighbors, like what are happening around them.
Yeah.
And so when that just benefits the builder, or you know, whoever.
Well, we'll give them the public policy, and given your particular concern about making sure. That there's always enough time to distribute the information.
Yeah.
That there, to have that provision in there, I mean, ha- have there been any situations where. It was like dire that they couldn't, that they needed their their hea- hearing in advance.
Right, tiny.
So so let me just give you one bit of history, remember, and I don't know if, uh, Councilor Nora was on the council. Remember, there was that applicant on Upper Ham that wanted to have the application. Heard quickly, so that her children would be able to celebrate Christmas. In their house, a year, you know. So, I mean, is that really a a legitimate reason to. Cause all of us to have to. Schedule some, I mean, that's not, I mean, is it, but but at the time, I think that. That council did determine that was an emergency. Remember, is that?
Yes.
I wasn't on the council then.
Yeah, I think it was.
I was not on the council.
So, so anyway, but but the, but the, but the council. Wanted to grant that request, so that's, that's the only time I recall that it was. I- in the recent past, but I think. You know, ten years ago, it was a routine thing, especially when a lot of houses were getting torn down, and and and. And the the applicants were worried that they had to pay. Ex- you know, to your point about, it was, it was basically trying to, it was pressured by. Builders that wanted to save money. And at the expense of our residents.
Right.
Being able to comment on, have adequate notice to make. Like when, when, remember you emerged from the population to. To be a energized citizen.
Right.
It's because you had the time to review everything.
Well, no, but it was still hard, I mean, you know, you don't know.
Since she's been on the council.
Yeah, I I just, I wouldn't want someone to think that they can just pay a fee and then get on the on the agenda.
Yeah.
Without the proper notification for all of the neighbors, cuz everyone should have the equal access rights.
Yeah, and that's why practically, it hardly if ever happens, um. Yeah, I mean, it it might be worth the discussion in the future, if there, you wanna leave the door open just in case, but. I think until, until we remove it, it it makes sense to at least keep keep a fee up there.
I agree.
Um, cuz it is technically possible on the code, even if we do just say no.
Yeah, we should just remove that though, in the code.
Um. Then, um. Building additions, same thing, instead of increasing the cost, um. What I've, what I've done is to better reflect kind of the thresholds of what our code sets. So there's a flat fee for anything under one hundred fifty square feet, which is when stormwater kicks in. And then anything above that is when you start paying a fee relative to the size of the construction. Before, we had set it at two hundred to, um, to benchmarking and start neighboring communities, but. I think that has the effect of also, um. Incorporating kind of inflationary costs, because now anything from, you have that a a lower threshold where that starts to go up. Um. Let's see, uh. Sorry, John.
Yeah, a quick point, uh, following up on what Kabir said, uh, on estimating the co- the. Uh, additional revenue from the uh, new fee structure. I- i- the main, far and away, the main source of added revenue would come from the uh, new homes, boosting it from. Twenty-five hundred to five thousand, and so if there are, let's say, four new homes, that's ten thousand, and then you might add. Another thousand or a couple thousand for the uh, for the much smaller fees with much smaller increases. And so that would, I think, give us an idea of the amount of revenue that we might expect increased from. From the new fees, over.
Yeah, we we could do that, um. I guess my, the only. The, part of the reason I haven't done that is because it's hard to know if there's any. Effect of depressing the the. Uh, the demand for new construction, if we if we raise. Uh, the demand for new construction if we, if we raise the fees.
It wouldn't. Anyone who wants to live here is gonna, you know, be spending a lot of money and, you know, an extra twenty-five hundred won't deter them, I don't think. But, you know, it just gives us a ballpark, in other words, we're not talking about, uh, fifty thousand dollars, we're talking about a pretty small. Um, uh, in, increase in terms of our overall revenue, over.
Fair enough, um, then I can, I can look at that. Um, the, I, I, just look, go, going through them, um, in the interest of time, I'll try to, try to be quick on them. I think we've covered most all of them, um, the only, um. The only other one that I, that kind of has a difference, um, from before is for variances. So we, we talked a lot about variances and I. I think, um, given that the town attorney is usually involved heavily in variances. Um, the cost for variances can vary greatly, uh, uh, you know, across the different municipalities. Um, so what I suggested is, um. Half of the total construction permit fees for a variance, so in other words, if, if you're, if you're applying for a variance. It costs fifty percent extra to apply for, which to me. It makes sense that the town, the town staff, including the town attorney, spend about fifty percent more time going through it. On, on calls, doing the presentations. And then the, the other wrinkle I added on there was to just, um. Say, we, we've had a few instances where. They're applying for multiple variances, and so. Um, just making sure that each variance is captured instead of one fee for a variance hearing, instead it's. Half the total cost for a variance and then a small addition, additional fee for each additional variance beyond that.
I don't know, let me just throw it, throw something in here, I don't know if this is kosher or not. But why wouldn't we charge a higher permit fee for a developer versus. Our town residents that own the homes?
Well, because the developer is a town resident. They, they own, they, they own the home, so they, they have the same rights as a homeowner.
They pay taxes?
Yes.
It, you, you can't, you can't, you, you can't distinguish, first of all.
The question.
A lot of times, but, but. But a lot of times, you, you, there's, there's no definition of who. Who, with the applicant. The applicant, the applicant is the property owner.
Everyone who has the equal rights to buy the property.
So you can't say, are you gonna live there, it's the, the, it's the definition of the applicant is the property owner.
Okay, it's just a question.
Yeah, it was, it was a question, but so we can't, that's, but you know, we've had, so we've had this discussion before. Like, who is the applicant? Because a lot of times, the applicant might be. It, let's say two people own the house, one person puts in the application. What happens if the other person, it's the co, the other person that co-owns it didn't want to put in the application? So, so didn't we clarify our applications so that?
Yeah, we, we check with the, um. Uh, SSTAT, so it takes, uh.
Yeah.
The state's land ownership records, so that, that the, the owner is the applicant.
Yeah, you have to, and then another thing is remember, a lot of times the applicant. Uh, doesn't present their, their representative, does their architect, their builder, or their lawyer, or. Whoever, but we don't have any requirement about that either. You know, we don't say, where's your legal document? That your relationship between the person that's, that's presenting.
Council member, come on.
But, uh, Matt, I just, can you hear me by the way?
Yes.
Uh, we're coming up to the budgeted R M, I'm about to lose my headset, um, the. The, a couple of things, I think in terms of just backing up for a second. It, I just did a quick count of the number of fees. We have, just the number of fees for what it's worth. From an optics perspective, we have versus the other towns you're benchmarking us to in this spreadsheet. Uh, so we have seventeen versus fourteen from most except for Chevy Chase Village, which has fifteen fees. And then you're proposing two new fees, so that will take our count of fees to nineteen. Which will be the highest of all. Count of fees proposed, uh, by us relative to other, other towns, so that's one point I wanted to make. Uh, for the benefit of the council, and the other is a clarification, I didn't understand your, uh, variance. Explanation and, and especially your. Explanation about minor variance will not be disproportionately impacted, uh. At the, you know, risk of making repeat yourself, do you mind just walking us through that again?
Yeah, sure, so variance, variances, not, not a minor variance, but that each. Basically that there would be a set variance fee, so that would be fifty percent of the permitting cost. Is, is the variance fee, and then if you have, maybe, maybe. Talking about it in a, in a hypothetical can better illustrate it, so you, you have somebody that wants to build a porch. On their front house that it encroaches an extra ten feet into the setback. So they pay half of that fee, half of their construction fee as a variance fee. But then in addition to the porch, there's another, there's, they have to do one for the overhang, so there's a, there's another additional cost for that.
They pay half of what as their variance fee?
The, the actual building permit fee. So, so say it's a new, new construction, maybe is a better example, and they want, they want to build. They encroach into the, the front an extra five feet. With a porch, so they pay their five thousand dollar new building permit fee. Plus half of that, so they pay an extra twenty-five hundred for the variance. But then they also have an additional variance because they have the overhang on the porch, so there's, there's really two variances, but they're really. They're kind of the same thing, so there's not a huge additional administrative cost to look at both of them.
Yeah, I hate to say another complication here, which is that we have homes that are not in compliance because they were built before code changed. So when they come in, they get sort of automatic variances because they are not in compliance. Um, we can't charge them for that really, can we? I mean, that's. Doesn't seem fair.
Well, I think it's a good question asked by the town attorney.
Well, for, so if something's grandfathered, but we, if, if you, if you do an addition, you, you're. I see what you're saying, that if it's, if it's grandfathered in and you want to add to it, you, you have to apply for.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, but in theory, it's, we already do, we already do charge them a variance fee for it, number one, and then number two is. Typically, that's going to be a smaller variance because it, it's, it's not, it's not a big new construction to do it.
Well, maybe we could ask for one, I think I have two levels of their, of, of charge is one for those that are being grandfathered in. Um, and those that are new construction.
But how, but how would you decide what's being grandfathered in?
Well, I mean, it, it gets hairy, the, the, the one that we just did, I had to ask the engineer. How much closer to the street was the porch going to be because they had a request. Five foot variance, but the five foot variance was resolved because the existing home was already not in compliance with the code. And so actually, it's only two feet more towards the curb. Because of the non-compliance.
I actually think though, I mean. For better or for worse, this fee structure would actually probably cost them less than the current. Flat fee for a variance.
Do you reckon?
But, yeah, I, that, we have to ask, that's, I think it's a question as round of legal burden, it's because. Because, you know, if you, for example, if you bought a house. With, there was some kind of, you know, like violation. And then. You didn't do your due diligence, like you didn't get, like that's something that inspectors should pick up.
No, the, the, the.
Buy it, so that.
This is when our code changes after the house was built, so that we, um. And have homes that do not comply with our current setbacks, because they were built before our setbacks were established.
That is a great, that's a good question.
So, I think it's, yeah, a house that.
Yeah.
Was now encroaches on our side setback.
Yeah.
They want to build that in line with their house, they're not trying to build any closer to the neighbor. But they're already in violation, so is that really?
Yeah.
That's a good, a good question, that, that's a good question, that, that definitely should be asked of one.
Okay.
I just want to jump in, um, I tend to agree with Councilmember Barr on that one, also this one is additionally tricky because. It's one of the ones, if I'm understanding the math correctly, Matt, it would be higher than the rate of inflation. The sort of, the, the net figure, right? Because it would be half of five thousand.
For new construction, yeah, if they need to apply for a variance for new construction, yes.
So this is a, this is one of three or four on your list that are, go beyond the rate of inflation increase.
Yeah. Um, but I, I mean. I guess my thinking there is that our variance fee is currently very low in comparison to our neighboring towns. And so by inflation, you know, we're, we're, we're not even bringing up to what we, what our neighboring towns.
So you're benchmarking what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like in summary, the three that we've sort of flagged that maybe need a little bit of. Fine tuning or additional information is the new construction fees, the. Uh, variance fees and the tree fees. Now, were there any others that? I, I guess, I guess one thing I didn't address is Councilmember Kumar's point about the number of fees. Um. I guess the only, the only additional piece of data there, I would say, is that Chevy Chase View, for example, they. They basically just say, and for everything else you have, you get charged seventy-five dollars, so. There's, there's other smaller things that might not be on the list that they charge for, but. But yeah, we, we, you know, we have a unique stormwater code that nobody else does, so that's part of our explanation there. And then the tree, a tree fee would be new and only one other town has that same one, so that's what kind of puts us.
And that's Chevy Chase Village.
And that's Chevy Chase Village, so that's what puts us kind of two, you know, two above the next highest. And also, and, and actually even more to the point, the late fee and the special meeting fee. Are unique to Somerset because other municipalities don't, don't have hold hearings for building permits.
Which we can get rid of.
Which we could get rid of.
So there's one less fee.
Two.
Two less fees.
Because they're too, yeah.
Well, I could, I mean, I brought that up to say one could argue either way, I mean, these are not, like, we don't have twenty more fees. You know, without one or two or three, so it's not, we are within the benchmark. Um, of, but I think, um, so, you know, one can, one can make an argument on either direction. But I just wanted that fact in front of everyone.
Um, I don't know if you wanted to quickly go over activity fees, um. I think that most of them are. Either staying the same or slightly increasing with inflation, um. Morning swim is fine for now because it's tied to the cost that's. In our existing pool management contract, so the idea is that. It, it pays directly for that extra add-on service. Next year, that might need to be revisited because we'll have to have a new, we, we have a new contract, so I think. In order to keep that same idea constant, um.
Tennis, oh, there is.
Tennis, tennis, I, I suggested going up five dollars and I, what I sort of said is that, that's, that's basically inflation. But also, um, it keeps us then in thinking about what the yearly year maintenance of the tennis court is and we. It pays for about three quarters of the maintenance of the tennis court.
But if we upped it by five dollars, would that help even more?
That, that would bring it up to basically paying three, three quarters of.
Oh, and I think the tennis committee does not have a problem with a raised fee there.
Okay.
They've been asking for a raised fee, actually.
Yeah, yeah, they would not have a problem with that.
I, I mean, it's been fifteen years, I think, since it's been raised.
It should be better.
So I think that's.
How many people, uh, pay the tennis fee? I mean, I'm surprised you can get three quarters of the nine thousand out of twenty-five or thirty dollars.
We have two hundred and fourteen people that have signed up for tennis, actually, so.
People or households?
Households.
We do it by household.
I have, two hundred and fourteen.
I found the advertisement for the house when we moved here in nineteen ninety-five. And listed the tennis court fee on that at fifty dollars in nineteen ninety-five.
Oh, which gone down.
That's interesting.
Yes. So I think the, the two that are.
Quick question for Shannon, what would be, what would the tennis committee be comfortable with?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I feel like they said thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, ta, up ten dollars, I think, but I'm like ten dollars.
Should we go to that then?
Yes.
I mean, it hasn't been raised for, forever, and it was higher back when. Okay, there's room to raise it.
And to John's point, that, a total math on this, it's going to be a small dollar impact on the revenue, but. But, I, I, I think it's, it's, you know, I understand the other point, which is that we haven't increased these in a while.
So I think the, the two probably most contentious are the two smallest fees, actually. Um, the, the guest passes and then the aerobics, so. Guest pass has been at four dollars a day, I think, for.
As long as I can remember.
Years.
When I moved in thirty-eight years ago, it was, I think, two dollars.
Yeah.
Then it went up to three. Then it went up to four, it's been four probably for ten years.
Yeah, five years.
You really think it's that, no, no, I know it's more than five years, because I, we've been talking about this on the swim committee. So, on the pool committee forever, and I've been on that committee for a long time.
Seven years, I, I mean, I remember the meeting when it went from two to three. And the pool committee had proposed four dollars then, and there were a lot of family grandmothers here arguing that that was too much. And so the council then set, set it at three. But that, that meeting was certainly in the teens, like two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, something like that, because I asked when was it last raised? Of the then to our manager, and it was last raised in nineteen ninety-two, so.
And I, and I have done a pool survey and I apologize, I left home that book with all those numbers. And we are, there's only one other pool that has, I think, a five dollar fee. All the rest of them are ten dollars, seven dollars, nine dollars, I mean, we are so low, we are a best buy. And, um.
But there's, there's also people who feel that it should be free, even for guests, and that. That, that each household should be given an X number of free guest passes.
Aren't, aren't, aren't we, didn't we wrong to those, we shouldn't do that? Because it, we only got the, permission for the pool because it is for town residents.
Right.
We, for the implication, therefore the guests have to pay a fee because.
This pool is chartered just for.
Town residents and their guests.
I don't know that it says that. Whatever, we should be charging fee for guests.
These are really good questions, that we should ask Ron.
But I think going up to five dollars is definitely in order.
Yeah, I'll go to complain.
Kabeer, I saw your hand.
Uh, this is why I think anchoring and rate of inflation across the board, permit and activities.
What do you mean by inflation?
Yeah, I think makes a lot of sense. Because in fact, if you increase it against inflation, it will be above five dollars, marginally, but it will be above five dollars, if I'm not mistaken, so. I think on aerobics, uh, that point aside, last year when we did the math on, I mean, as you know, I. I proposed an increase last year, it crazed, raised a lot of concerns across the board. It crazed, raised a lot of concerns across the board. And by diehard aerobic stance. And we, I mean, we, we produced math that showed actually it is cost recoverable at eight dollars, so I'm now. At the mercy of Matt's math on this.
But it's, I, I mean, it's dependent on how, I mean, it's dependent on how many people use it yearly. It's different than morning swim because morning swim, you sign up. And you, that's what you, you, you can come or you cannot come, but you've signed up for it. Versus water aerobics, we have a set cost for what the aerobics instructor is. But if three people come one day and fifteen people come another day. So year to year, we're, we're, we are, we're right in that range of, the reason we raised it to ten dollars the year before is because eight didn't cover it. And then we raised it to ten and we, and we recovered it and then some, so we brought it down.
I would an- anchor in inflation, and I think to council member Barr's point. Maybe we should have some provision that every three years we review fees against inflation. And then make a call. Um, you know, so it's not every year at least, it's every three years, but I think if you do it against inflation, then of course that attracts.
But I think we could bring it up every year, if we just pass and say it's okay because uh we can't forget if it's a three-year interval.
But in this case, we have an instructor. So we need to, I think this really has to go with what does the instructor cost us, not, not every three years or every two years. If every year the instructor raises their, their price, then we need to raise. Our fee to cover it. If the instructor has not come, not raised their fees. Then maybe we leave it to what it was, what do we, did we make money out of this year?
No.
We lost like three hundred bucks.
We cannot make money, we cannot make money on any.
Right, 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 so we lost. X amount of dollars. And okay, so it says, says, say it's three hundred dollars, big deal. But, um, I think it'd behoove us to figure out what the instructor. What the cost of instructors, I'm happy to make that phone call if I have the information.
That's a good point, I agree with that.
I'll, I'll, I'll double check. The numbers, but, um.
So you want to raise it to nine dollars anyway?
My, my suggestion was to raise it to nine and. Split the baby. But. Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
Again, yeah, it's, it's, um. It's also peanuts, you know, for, and, 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 uh.
The guest fee at, uh. Every club around here. It has a pool, you know, exercise spot. Is usually twenty dollars.
I actually have all those numbers, nobody's that high.
One Life Fitness is.
Oh, One Life Fitness, I'm talking about the other, I'm talking about the other, the other pools and neighborhoods, they're much higher than us, but.
I know, but our competition is. The, what's near here, which is. Because they can't go to the, they have to know somebody to go to another pool as a guest.
That's true.
But if they want to go to One Life Fitness down the, up the street here, they can go. From the, off the street and pay twenty, or I think it might even be twenty-five, yeah.
I think, I mean, I think the goal is, which I, I think maybe council. Council member Kumar was sort of getting at is the goal for these. Extra things is to make them. Cost recoverable, that they're an extra service and that the people using this extra service. Cover the extra service, um. So I, I think that makes sense to, to benchmark it, you know, what do we spend versus what do we, you know, what do we take in and try to. Make them even out as, as best we can.
Why don't they call the, um, the. Pool, the company that gives us instructor and ask what our contract's going to be this year.
Um, yeah, we can, she may have even emailed her, I'm.
Okay, just give me information if you don't have it already, and I'll be happy to do it.
Okay.
I think from a, a policy perspective. I think council member Barr may have made this point. I think these are largely subsidized activities, let's be honest, they are subsidized. I think we, a, a broader sort of policy view, I've understood over the years, over the decades, has been that this is. A service. We are providing. Um, and this is part of sort of the values for our town. Um. You know, because if we were actually to benchmark it to market rates, it would be pretty significantly higher than what these are.
Well, yeah, and that was, that was part of the point that I've made on the guest pass is that. Taking the total maintenance cost of what the pool is and going against. The number of people that use it per year. It really, it evens out, or it works out to costing about thirty-three dollars per user. To use the pool. But. It's, it, it has a greater purpose for the town than just using it, so we, we subsidize. And it's an important part of our town. Okay, so I have some, um, things that I will. Tweak uh over this week for the introduction of this and then. Um, they can be further tweaked before adopted in, in May, um. So then taking another step back, just looking at the budget as a whole. Um, given that these fees are. Sm- like, small budget line items for us, um. Are there any, are, are there any questions we have about the budget, or did we want to talk about? The recommendation to. Um. Fully fund the rainy day funds this upcoming year, I don't know if that.
I, I, I have one question about it, which is, could you explain what the forty-seven thousand for code review is and staff request?
Yeah, so my recommendation for that was based on some of the discussions that we've had. To hire a consultant to. Look, do a comprehensive review of our code with, with the council and help. Um, help make improvements and, um, recommendations to.
So, so, um. Remember when? Before you run the council. We hired that outside company. Because the code was in terrible shape, it was, they had a lot of provisions that didn't apply in order like all that men, pool membership. Then there were many. Laws in there that had never been reviewed by. Council, so there's a lot of language, it was never a legal review. So when we, when we did the painstaking review, which took, I think, a year.
Year and a month.
It took forever. And, and during that time. We, in a lot of controversial areas, we put pins. And, and it was. Fast forwarded to future councils such as all of you. So I think, given some of the challenges you've had in. Making decisions on billing applications, because you. Know how vague the language is, and also some of the public policy goals that you have. Can't be accomplished. I think it's a really good idea to hire a company, but you're also going to have to be prepared to spend extra time during this year doing that. This is going to take more time. So it's up to you.
Yeah, I think the staff recommendation. The idea was get, get a, a company in here to help facilitate the discussion and maybe make, you know, engineering and planning recommendations.
But it's, but it's quite, but, so, so when you vote on this budget, you'll have to decide whether you want to leave that in there, allocate funds somewhere else.
I mean, if I, I can jump in, I think it's a sensible recommendation. De- definitely from a budgetary perspective, we can set aside money and then we can make a call. As we move into the new fiscal year.
Yeah, refine what the scope is that actually is appropriate, right? Um, I think otherwise, you know, we, we went through. The capital projects, um, for the most part, um. Uh. Kind of gone over the high-level operating budget, went detailed through revenue, so, um. If there's, there's any other things that you want to discuss tonight, not be to answer questions or, or other. Items that are worth discussing.
Um, we were wondering from the Public Safety Committee if whatever happened to that five thousand dollars that was for the painted down curbs.
Yeah, uh. We had. They'd gotten a company and then they backed out of it, so we. They just haven't gotten to it again yet.
So i- is it removed from the budget?
We have it in this year's budget.
It is on this.
So we could, we could still, we could still do it this, this spring.
Um, but, oh, but it hasn't been kicked to next year.
No, no.
And let's do it this spring. Okay, how do we do it?
But, yeah, we have to find the contract. Is it, so, so there's painting numbers on curves. There are some curves that are too small to have the numbers, I'm not quite. We don't, I mean.
That was one of the challenges, if we wanted to. One option was to do it in driveways, but there were. Some questions with that, but, um. But, yeah, um.
One of our neighbors, um, their landscaper did it for them, I could ask her for the name of the landscaping company.
Okay.
And see what they would do. They put it on her rock. She's got a rock, big rock there because it was better, you could really see it as opposed to the, the curve. You know, people have rocks. But I will, um, write myself a note to get.
Okay, yeah, that'd be helpful, thank you. All right, um. Well, I, uh. Obviously, if anything else comes up, you know, between now and Monday, feel free to let me know and, um. I guess the question is if. We, uh, I guess there's still a few outstanding questions, especially related to fees, so maybe, does it make sense to keep that? Early meeting before the council meeting? Um, or do you feel comfortable enough? With it, with these. Piques and additional information?
Matt, is it possible to send a update, the updated file? That will be introduced. On Monday. With the updated fee schedule. A couple of days before Monday. For the whole council, um.
Oh, yeah, 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 for sure, yeah, I, 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 my goal would be to get it out on Thursday, yeah.
Okay, I think if we have it by the end of the day, I don't know what the rest of the council feels. Then when do we need to send you any clarification on that file by? Uh. So you'll send it by close of.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I miss, I miss, I guess I misunderstood your question, so. Tomorrow, I'm going to try to track down the answers to any. Questions, so I'll, I'll, I'll get you. By Wednesday, I will get it over to you, so then, then.
So we have Thursday, Friday to get back to you or Thursday to get back to you, just so that we all plan.
If then, if then, I'll, if I send it to you no later than Wednesday, then if you don't mind taking a look at it on Thursday, then I can make the updates on Friday.
Does that work for the rest of the group?
No, that's a good point, yeah.
Correct. And then play, play it by ear in terms of whether or not the, an additional meeting is needed.
Let's schedule the additional meeting. And then we can cancel if we all feel good coming into the weekend, we, we might just sense that works for everyone.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll update the, um, the calendar invitation. Um, so it's, so it's early, so it pops up on your calendar, but we'll just use the same link. That we would for our regular council later.
Okay, okay, so I think we're. Pretty much said, I think, think.
When is the last day?
Next Friday.
Well.
Okay, so I think we can, I think that, uh, we can, uh, end the session today. The good committee members can go have their dinner.
Thank you, everybody for joining us and, yeah, and she's not here, but thank you, John and Peter dropped, dropped off too, but just extra special thanks to John and. Peter and Ann for all the work they do.
Yes. And we will obviously thank them again next week, but it's.
Can't give them enough thanks.
Right.
I got the name of, um.
Thank you, I do.
Bye.